For April 19th, 2016, could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Do I have any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item is public comments. At this time, it's a chance for anybody in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity. We have no public comments. The next item is the policy agenda. We have no news presentations and awards tonight. The next item would be item two, public hearings, McLaughlin's at the Marina. Do I have any public comment on that? Seeing none. Discussion?
I make a motion that the council approve the liquor license renewal for McLaughlin's at the Marina.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. We're in this group. There were some questions or concerns last year about their further developing that site. Have we had any recent issues with code or anybody?
They are currently working with the state fire marshal's office to get their final approvals.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item up on the public hearings is the sewer ordinance amendments. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the sewer ordinance amendments.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item up is the fees ordinance amendments. Any public comments?
Just regular fees.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No. I would move that we adopt the fees ordinance amendments.
Second.
Okay, I have some discussion then. And I don't know if it's under the fees ordinance when we get into the subdivisions and building permits. I think they're ridiculous. It's got in there, the fee's gone way out of reason on a building permit. And if I want to do a subdivision, I'm based on $50 per acre. Now, that's fine if I build downtown and I've got water and sewer, my building permit's nothing. But if I have 60 acres in rural Hampden and I divide it into six lots, I'm paying $50 on 60 acres of land because I'm creating a 10-acre lot. It's not fair. And I don't understand why we charge so much when we want to encourage development in this town. And with these rate increases that I've looked at, is way above what we used to pay for the average homeowner. And I don't know why, because it isn't any different procedure than we had before. So, you guys have made the motion, but I'll vote no. But my opinion is, as far as the building permits and the subdivision, I'm not ready to vote on it because I think the prices are outrageous. I think we're totally discouraging anything to be business-friendly at all. And I think we need to take a longer look at that before we move on to that one. That's my opinion. Any other discussion?
Question. How do we line up with surrounding communities, do we know?
We're way above it with the new proposals.
So, I wanted to just put a procedural option on the table because I anticipated there may be questions on certain sections of the fees ordinance and others may be non-controversial. The proposed changes in the building and subdivision came primarily from code enforcement. You had the memo in the packet which provided rationale. The code enforcement officer was not available to be here tonight. He teaches on Tuesday nights. He would be available to be here if this portion of the hearing was continued. He did, he and I did meet today, and I had reviewed what he'd proposed before I put it out there, but we met today. What he told me is that the reference to the building code is the same as what Bangor uses, but that the multiplier is significantly less in Hampden to what Bangor charges. That may or may not be material, but that's what he said. So, I wanted to make sure you understood the procedural option to go forward on some portions of the ordinance and continue the hearing on other portions of the ordinance. There are sections in here specifically on sewer and pool fees that I feel are somewhat time-sensitive. Other than that, I would have no concern about continuing the other aspects of the hearing.
And maybe his analysis is true with Bangor, but I know if you go to Winterport, Newburgh, Herman, you don't pay anywhere near the building fees that you're going to pay in Hampden. So, to me, it's a deterrent. It's not really helping us. Counsel McAvoy?
Yeah, this brings up, you know, the concern that I have about this fees ordinance in general is that I think it's just cumbersome to have these fees, you know, enveloped in this type of process. I mean, I guess I can understand, you know, from some standpoint where you just don't want fees going up willy-nilly and all of that kind of stuff. But when it comes to items like this where individual fees, I mean, either you, you know, pass the whole thing or you don't pass the whole thing, or that's the part of it that I really don't understand. So, I appreciate the fact that we have the opportunity to separate these out. Because I agree. I don't recall when we discussed and then what committee we discussed these, the fees for, you know, building permits and whatnot. Did we have that conversation anywhere? Because I don't recall it if we did.
We didn't. And I'll just, especially for those watching from home, I'll kind of walk through the sequence. And to the extent there's been any procedural issue, I'll take full ownership of that. But under the ordinance, it calls for the fees ordinance will be updated annually in October by the council. So, back in October, or back in September, I put out a call to all departments saying, review the whole ordinance, any of the fees that your department oversees, if you have recommended changes, send them to me so that when I sent something to the council, it would reflect staff input. Back in October, we did have a meeting, I believe it was the last meeting in October. It was clear that there was, some of the proposals were controversial, and specifically on building permit fees. With all of the other issues that we had going on, we kind of tabled that for a while and to my recollection, no action, I'm certain no action was taken at that time. In February, as you know, we opened the book on the fees ordinance specifically for the sewer fees and dealt with just that aspect of it, closed that and moved forward. Then primarily driven by two issues policy-wise. One is the pool fees and the interest in what I think are very modest adjustments that would absorb the cost of offering online registration, which is time-sensitive. And the second issue is the sewer connection fee, which the Public Works Director had been pointing out since his first day on the job, he felt was well below what it ought to be because it treats a single-family house the same as it treats 144,000 square-foot industrial facility. So, those two issues kind of bubbled up as being more time-sensitive. So, we brought the fees ordinance back. And I think to Terry's point, and as we've acknowledged before, having these all-in-one ordinance is very cumbersome because all of these are, they affect the whole organization. They do not all come together at once. Perhaps in my interest in getting things forward, I said if we're opening the book, we're paying the legal cost to have the hearing, let's at least put things on the table so that we can at least, you know, yes or no, I just want to get to some resolution. But I would suggest that if there's action that can be taken on certain sections and we continue certain sections, that's great. I'll reiterate what I've said in the past, which is I'd like to get to a point over time where at least some fees are taken out of the ordinance that can be done by policy so that you don't have the legal costs, which are significant. But process-wise, I think, as we're talking about it, I'm saying, geez, we should have had that building and subdivision fees in planning and development. And it was, I think it was really just, you know, I'm trying to save money and not have to advertise the fees ordinance seven times a year, but maybe that's where we're at until we change it. But I would much rather see action go forward on those things that are non-controversial and out of respect for those staff, particularly code enforcement that did put in a lot of time and thought, I would suggest that if there's issues that don't appear to have support or have some questions, I would rather have those questions in a public forum, whether it's before the council or whether it's referred back to planning and development. But I'd like to push it to resolution so that one way or the other, we either change it or not, and we can go forward.
Counsel Marble?
We had a meeting a month or so ago, I recall, where we were all stumbling by the end of the night on motions and language. And this may be an unintended continuation of that. And we don't have an attorney here. What I'm trying to do is offer friendly amendment to my own motion to separate the fees ordinance amendments regarding subdivision and building permits out of tonight's proceedings to go back to planning and development to then come back to the council.
In approving all other fees?
Well...
I think we have to vote on the one that's been...
Vote first.
It was seconded, so we need to vote on that and then have an amendment.
Yeah. Can I withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion.
I would request that I withdraw my earlier motion, if that's okay with whoever seconded it. And I can't remember at this point.
It was me. I'm fine.
Okay. So, we're back to the darn board. So, do we want to work down through this from the beginning of our list? I think the pool, the sewer fees, we've already gone through.
Can I just, for simplicity's sake, the only real area of contention is the subdivision. So, if we were to remove that?
It's building permits.
Well, building permits, subdivision.
Basically, everything that has to do with code enforcement.
So, do we approve everything with the exception of those items in code enforcement?
I would think the better path would be to affirmatively say these sections we are comfortable with because there is, there is a lot in here. And for example, one thing I was intending to bring up forward once we got into discussion, the whole issue of the harbor ordinance is on page five of the draft. When we met back in the winter, it seemed we were going in the direction of really backing off from that. But in light of what's happened more recently, particularly the need to approve private moorings under the state harbor master statute, I'd suggest that 2.6.2, that the $25 annual fee, personally, I would rather see that stay in than strike that because if we are issuing a mooring permit, I think a $25 fee is justified. So, there's a lot of detail in here. I'd much prefer to see the council affirmatively say we support X, Y, and Z.
Counsel Marble?
Yeah, I need to own that I didn't, I didn't prepare well enough before tonight's meeting either. So, in this discussion, someone give me guidance as to what page in this 210 pages we're starting on.
145.
Well, 130 is the pool, so if we want to start with that one.
Just so do it in order.
Page 130. Are there any questions on any of that, on the pool?
So, for those following along at home, that's Article 8 of the fees ordinance, which is page 15.
So, do we want a motion approving for every section?
We need, yeah, we're going to go through for the pools, fees, amendments. So, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the changes to the fees for the Laurel Hoyt Memorial Pool.
Second.
Any public comment? Discussion?
Yeah, I want to make sure that when we vote, I know what I'm looking at that's been proposed to be changed.
Have you found page 130?
I'm looking at a memo from Angus to Miles dated March 21st that has some increases like Article 2.5.
No, page 133 of 210. And I guess we could...
133.
143 gives you the list of them.
Yeah, no, it's, and I apologize for the confusion. For both, for the fees that were generated by the pool director and the code enforcement officer, I included both their correspondence and the proposed fees. So, there's some duplication there because they've, I felt that if I did not include their memos, that you wouldn't have a complete record in front of you. And because they each included as an attachment to their memos red lines, I can see that that would be confusing. The complete fees ordinance, and I believe 143, it's the same, substantively, it's the same information. It's just appears in different, two different places.
So, the pool starts at 131, correct? The fee schedule?
I don't have the PDF in front of me. It's page 15 of the fees ordinance.
So, page 131.
I don't want that. No. Article eight, it's also down here again. This is your table of contents. If you down through here to page 15, you'll find it again.
So, for example, I'm looking at a chart that shows roughly a 3% increase in fees where there is an increase.
That's for certain fees. For the six-month and the three-month resident fees, not for the annual fees because we want to encourage people to make, you know, annual commitment to the pool. There's no proposed fee increase for the daily swim fee or for resident swim lessons. The cost of non-resident swim lessons would go up 50 cents. No proposed change to private swim lessons. And very modest change to two sections of the facility rental fees.
Any other discussion? So, we have a motion and a second to accept the pool amendment fees. All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. The next item, according to what I've got down here, would be the administration, Article 1, administration, page 145. Any public comment? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the administration?
I make a motion that we accept the changes to the administration fees.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like you to slow down just a little bit because it is kind of difficult when we're trying to go through these iPads.
Yeah, no problem.
For some pages, so the public knows. Some pages are easy to read and other ones are sideways. And in a 200-page document on an iPad, it is rather cumbersome to find it. So, just slow down a second until we get to that.
I'm ready when you, that's all.
Thanks.
Counsel Marble?
If I'm looking in the right place, the only substantive, I would say, in my terms, the only substantial increases I see are within the cemetery ordinance.
That's coming up. Yeah, but that's coming up.
That's not under admin?
No.
That's under Article 2. We're on Article 1, page 3 of the fees ordinance.
Yep. Further, I'm fine with that page.
You all set, Counsel Wild?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Now, we're down to Article 2. Any questions on Article 2?
I have a question, and I don't need an exact answer. I'm just wondering on the cemetery ordinance fees, for example, any sense at all of when the last time was that those might have been increased?
The ordinance doesn't specify the, this article was last amended in August of '09, but that doesn't, it doesn't break out which subsection was amended. But this section came from the Public Works Director working with Sexton. And I know he'd be very happy to appear before a committee to answer questions if that would be helpful.
I'll move acceptance of the fees amended under Article 2.
Second.
The harbor ordinance...
Yeah, this includes all of the, everything that we do not want, or necessarily.
Well, okay, let's, if you want to break it down.
I can try.
Are there any issues with 2.1, 2.2?
I could amend my motion.
Okay.
To move approval of sections 2.1 through 2.5.
How about, okay.
A second.
Any other discussion? Do we have a second on that?
We did.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So, we'll get down to the next one. 2.6, we're going to put on hold, correct? Discussion?
2.6 through where? I mean...
Well, I'm just saying, we had talked about it earlier, so just 2.6, and then we'll move on to the rest unless you've got a...
Again, just flying too fast here for me. This starts tying right into your concerns, Mayor. We get down to 212 subdivision ordinance.
So, do I have a motion to approve 2.7 to 2.11?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any of that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. So, on 2.12... Do we want to hold on that?
Sir, do we want to do 2.13? So, we'd only place a hold on 212, correct?
Well, that's entirely up to you guys.
My sense of this right now is that we'd move 2.6 and 2.12 to committee as soon as we can, which I'm assuming is P and D.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night? Well, better to have 24 hours than try to thrash it all out tonight, I think. Does that mean we'd have to continue the public hearing to even think of this?
If the intent is to take action within this hearing, even as may be extended to subsequent meetings, then you should keep the hearing open and it could be referred to P and D, and you would have that input for the continued hearing. If you feel that it's something we just need to kick forward without having a continued hearing, that's also an option. It's just to leave out certain sections.
So, do I have a motion just to keep the hearing open, but move to P and D, section 212, which would incorporate 2.12, 2.1, 2.3, all the way down to 7?
That would be my motion.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel McAvoy?
Well, my only concern is if we're going to continue the hearing, do we have to have a date specific that it's a 2? So, that's going to tie, that's going to force our hand, so to speak, to have something done before that date. So, I'm not saying it's a problem, I'm just saying we probably ought to pick the date. Probably what we want to get done, right? Right. That'd be the next council meeting?
You can go the one after that if you wanted, right?
Yeah, as long as it's date certain, you could pick.
So, we could pick two council meetings from tonight. That way, we've got two P and D's to get it resolved in.
Then, for the purpose of doing better town work, I would move that we extend or continue the public hearing till the date of two town council meetings from tonight, which is May 16th, I believe.
We have another one before the next couple. You got two, you got one. Okay, any further discussion on that? Counsel Comia?
Could you go over the number again, where we're starting, where we're stopping? Thank you.
Okay. 2.12, which will take in 2.12-1, all the way down to 2.12.6.
Or 7, sorry.
Which is that cost? Do you find those all right? Yep.
And 2.6, right?
Two walls.
The harbor ordinance?
Yes.
Thought we'd already done the harbor.
We skipped the harbor ordinance, but we didn't actually set a course, so...
All right, so you're adding 2.6 to 2.12.
Right.
Okay, now that we're all totally confused, is there any other questions?
I don't think anyone seconded that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Is everybody clear on what we're doing? Nod of the head would be great, that way I know we're all good. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So, let's keep going down. If anybody has 2.13, are there any issues with that?
Can I make one? I make a motion...
Nope, go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept 2.13, 2.14, and 2.15.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So, the next is 2.16, which I have a problem with that one. I, I don't agree with the, uh, formula that they use for a permit on any of this. A shed under 120 feet's $100, and it's only a $300 shed, it's too bad to pay $100 for the permit. But, it's open for discussion. Counsel McBike?
I'd make a motion that we add 2.16, uh, to the Planning and Development Committee.
All encompassing, all of 2.16?
All of 2.16.
I second.
Discussion, Counsel McAvoy?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna suggest we could, we might as well add 2.17, 18 also. Or, you know, I guess 2.18's fine, but, um, 2.17 is sort of related. I don't know if anybody has any issues with that or not, but--
So, 2.16, 2.17 to go to planning, uh?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to have 2.16 and 2.17 to go to Planning and Development.
And would that also be referred back to a continued hearing on May 16th?
That's correct.
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? The next item is 2.18.
Make a motion that we accept 2.18.
Second.
Discussion, public comment? Counsel McAvoy?
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that I understand what this is. Is this, I mean, I, I applied and received a driveway entrance permit a while ago, and it cost, I don't believe I paid anything for it.
There was no cost for a driveway permit before.
Okay, so now there is going to be?
Exactly.
Okay. And that's simply because of the cost of adding it to the E91, E911 ordinance?
Well, I was actually part of it before, too, with no cost. Public comment? Yeah, come ahead. Um, I think it would be R911, but it would be a state would have to issue that driveway culvert. That wouldn't be up to the town on the driveway. But, 911 would still be a town. Counsel Marble?
Well, at the risk of showing my ignorance, I thought we had discussion in committee with the Director of Public Works that ultimately gets into issues like the installation, the proper installation and maintenance of a culvert, protecting the public interest in the road attached to the driveway, and so there's some sort of notification and inspection process connected with the permit that--
No.
No? I'm remembering this incorrectly?
From, from my knowledge of this, as you apply for a driveway permit, the Public Works Director will show up, you have it staked out where you want it, and he will tell you what size culvert, if any, you need, and if there is visual sight for the road for pulling out, so there's not a hazard. That's a town road, that's not a state road. I'm talking town roads right now. So, you put the culvert in, there's no inspection on the culvert. The, the homeowner puts that in with his own contractor.
But if there's been determination of a need for one, that did come from the Public Works Director.
Came from the Public Works Director.
And whether there's gonna be one or not, it's requisite that he shows up to--
Exactly.
Approve the location. So, the permit is basically paying for the cost of his time, is what it sounds like to me.
And Kyle's time to issue a 911. Counsel McAvoy, you got a funny look on your face.
Well, I'm, I'm just kinda, how, how does the E911 come into this if it's a state application? I mean, what--
Well, I'm assuming 911 would still have to, because they gotta know, in case of fire or anything, where to go.
Right, but I mean, are they still assess this $50 fee, or is that not, or?
As written, it doesn't distinguish, but I think, uh, Mr. King's raised an excellent point. It is, the process is different, whether it's a town or a state road.
Right. I, I'm just kinda confused why they were linked together.
So, do you want to add this to the public hearing to be referred to May, so we can discuss this further?
I would appreciate it, 'cause I'm still confused by it. I mean, I've--
Did we, we didn't have a motion in a second.
I, I move, um, that we suspend discussion on 2.18 tonight, to move it to P and D, to be taken up at the continued public hearing on May 16th, if that's the correct date.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, moving on. Uh, Section 3.1. Any issues from 3.1 to 3.9?
No, no proposed changes in Section Three, or Article Three, or Article Four.
Do we need an amendment, or need a vote then, or just?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, so then we move down to Article 5.1.
I make a motion that we accept Article Five, Public Works, as amended.
Do we want to do 5.1 and 5.2?
And just for those watching at home, these, uh, Public Works--
5.1 and 5.
These were, uh, discussed at the Infrastructure Committee, and 5.2 is a housekeeping article to get the fees ordinance to reflect the actual fee.
So, I amend, so Article Five, Public Works, 5.1 and 5.2.
Second.
Discussion? Everybody all set with that? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, now moving on. Articles Six, Recreation.
Any changes?
No, no proposed amendments to Article Six, Recreation, or to Article Seven, Library.
Okay, so we already voted on the pool.
And so for clarification, you don't need a votes on, votes on those two sections?
I think that's all of those. So, the next item on our agenda tonight would be the Town Ways Ordinance Amendments. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none? Do we have some discussion?
What you have before you is the, uh, ordinance that was discussed in an Infrastructure Committee, um, with redlined revisions that the Town Attorney has recommended.
Why doesn't I go back to Infrastructure? After it's been-- After, after it's been looked at by the attorney, why would it not go back to Infrastructure?
Uh, they seem to me somewhat non-substantive--
Okay.
But, but that's at the pleasure of the, uh, Council.
After a quick review and remembering the discussion in Infrastructure, I move adoption of the Town Ways Ordinance.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? The next item on the agenda tonight is Item E, Proposed Street Opening Utility Ordinance. These are just changes that we had already gone over?
Make a motion that we accept the proposed Street Opening Utility Ordinance.
Second.
Public comment? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the, tonight's agenda is nominations appointments. Joan Riley, the Planning Board appointment. Counsel McBike? I thought that went through P and D, but she was, uh, brought up to be appointed as a alternate to the Planning Board. Do I have a recommendation? She wasn't, she was already--
She, yeah, she's already been, uh--
An alternate.
She's already an alternate, so with the recent resignation of Andrew Nelson from the Planning Board, uh, the, uh, request is for the Council to, uh, appoint her as a full member of the Planning Board.
I make a, I make a motion that we, uh, appoint to the Planning Board, Joan Riley.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Next item is unfinished business, the update on the RSU 22 budget process. Counsel Jennings?
It's, uh--
Mayor Jennings?
Manager.
Okay, I'll get it right eventually.
This is, uh, really a process timing update. Uh, as you know, the, uh, RSU 22 Budget Committee opened their hearing on the proposed FY17 school budget. Uh, that was continued, it was, uh, supposed to continue about a week and a half ago. They postponed, uh, the continued hearing till a week from tonight, on April 26, at 6:00 PM, at the Hampden Academy Library. Uh, in addition, I've been continuing to correspond with, uh, the Superintendent's Office and with the Managers and, um, Selectmen in, um, Winterport, Newburgh, and Frankfort, respectively, and, uh, following up on the meeting we had had with the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent back in February, um, we've scheduled another meeting next Tuesday during the day, at which point we'll have the opportunity to go through some, uh, issues in more detail. We have received some additional, uh, backup on the proposed budget, uh, with some detail that had not been previously available, so, um, we're looking to, for continued involvement in that process.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Counsel Marble?
No, just, just editorial observation that this is an issue that we are not alone in dealing with. And the media last week, I believe, was focused on stories about Glenburn, which is a sending community which does not participate in an RSU or an SAD, but has to send secondary students, um, in a decision to cut staffing positions and absorb an increase to the mill rate because of, you know, basically what amounts to tax shifting, tax cost shifting.
Any other discussion? Thank you. The next item is, uh, new business, Solarized Bangor Presentation, Referral from Planning and Development. Counsel McBike?
This was brought to Infrastructure and then passed on to Planning and Development, and basically what it is, is, uh, it's, uh, Greater Bangor Solarize. It's a, um, I believe it's, right now, basically a, a one-woman organization run by Karen Mary's daughter, and they are, they, they have the same projects in Freeport, Mid-Maine, and Mid-Cost Maine, and what they like from us is for us to authorize their, um, solarizing the Greater Bangor area, and what that amounts to is the fact that they do the work, and they're just saying we support solar energy, um, in this area, and we're one of the communities that, um, that do that. If they call the town saying, "You support this," then the town has a name to pass on to say, uh, "Go to this person and find out." One thing that they do is, once it gets set up and becomes available up here, is they go out to bid, uh, for, um, a contractor who will, who will do the solarization of your house if you so desire, and hopefully do it at, at a, at a very, uh, good rate. And so, they're asking us to, uh, to, uh, to back that program, and, uh, I would like to make a motion that we back the, uh, Greater Bangor Solarize.
Second.
Public comment? Discussion, Counsel Marble?
No, I'm just gonna agree with and add to Counsel McBike's comments, I think the basic theory is to take advantage of group expertise and group buying power. Uh, the town is not agreeing to use any taxpayer money in this, but to be a conduit of information by way of phone call or the Internet. Um, I did note that the city of Bangor has put some money towards this, in terms of, um, trying to incentivize, uh, residents living in older homes that are probably poorly insulated and are expensive to heat, um, to try to conserve their costs and, and energy over time. So, simply to repeat this, we're just being asked, basically, to put our name and to be a bridge connecting people about information.
Counsel McAvoy?
Yeah, I have no problem with, uh, being a bridge for information, as long as it includes all information. Um, I, I'm not a supporter of, uh, solar energy by any stretch of the imagination, because it, it, the only reason it survives in, in, in the form that it's in today is for, through, you know, just immense taxpayer contribution to this. So, um, as long as the town is willing to put out, uh, you know, the full information regarding, uh, solar power, or, you know, the, the benefits, or the, you know, the negative sides of it, and, and to me, the negative side is the incredible amount of tax money that's being shoveled into this on a daily basis, um, so I have no problem with that.
Any other, Counsel McBike?
Yeah, I, I think that's up to the individual to find the positives and negatives. I think this is funneled just through the positive fact, or the fact that you can solarize, here's how you can do it, here's how you can go to. I think the negative part of it, it's up to the individual if they want to find out the negative concerns on that, and that doesn't have anything to do with us whatsoever.
Counsel McAvoy?
Well, by implication, by, you know, simply saying that, uh, having it out there is implying that, you know, that we think it's a good idea, and we don't. Some people think it might be a good idea, but those are the individuals that are, you know, tend to, uh, or will reap a benefit from that, so, again, as long as, you know, it's fair and balanced, I have no problem with that.
Counsel Marble?
I think as a Council, we could entertain any number of different proposals from different energy sources that would parallel this, that we could agree similarly to be a bridge on. I don't think it's up to the Council to either initiate this, which we're not, uh, or to look for the other side of the argument in this case. I don't think that we're endorsing or encouraging people, I think we're just simply connecting them with available information. So, I, I agree, I certainly agree that there are hidden costs to every commercially available form of energy right now, including, um, oil and gas-based, uh, but I don't think that's really what this is about.
Counsel McAvoy?
Uh, that's exactly what it's about. The, simply by having the town put their name, because she said, "The only thing that we want from the town is your name, your prestige, your, your, your stamp of approval on this," to, you know, encourage people. Well, if the town of Hampden thinks it's a good idea, it must be a good idea. Well, it's not. So, if we're gonna represent one side of it, we need to represent both sides of it. So, I, I just disagree with, you know, by saying that we endorse it doesn't take a position. That's exactly what we're doing. So, if, if we're going to do it, you know, if we're going to be a proponent on one side, you know, I, I, I don't think that's fair. If someone calls here, or, you know, I, I don't think we ought to be sending them anywhere. If we want to give them this person's number, fine, but, as far as, you know--
So, I think that's all we're doing, Terry, is just giving them a number and a, you know, information to contact. We're not supplying anything else otherwise than that. It, you know, it gets them into the group buying, the way I understood it, if Hampden comes along and says, you know, "We support this, and we're behind it," that they, if, if they so choose, and they call, then we'll give them, I believe it was her number, that she told us, and they can deal with her, we, we don't have anything to do with that.
Well, you just said yourself, if we get behind it. What is that?
Yeah, if we say we're behind the fact that, yes, if you want to have a solar panel on your house, you call here, and we'll give you a number, and we'll set you up with somebody that you can talk to. Counsel Marble?
I'm just trying to remember-- I'm just trying to remember, we voted on this in Planning and Development, I think.
Correct.
We also had a really long discussion about it in Planning and Development, and it was very clear that we were just putting an information source on the town website and a story.
Counsel McAvoy?
Okay, so if I can come up with a source that has competing information, that'll be offered also?
You bring it to the town council and they vote to put it on the website, I would say yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? 5.2. Okay, moving on. I'd like to have a motion, if we could, to move the executive session, 5B, down below Counselor's comments, so we can get the rest of the meeting in and not hold up the public. Do I have a motion to...
So moved.
Move that down?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so we move the executive session below Counselor's comments. The next item on the agenda tonight would be the committee reports. First would be services, Counsel McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the April 11th meeting, the committee discussed a few items which, which are referenced in the lease for the ski-in center, such as parking, the separation of utilities, and heating plant upgrade. None of the issues merited referral to the council. We also discussed the cost to the town associated with supporting the various affiliated recreation programs, and the consensus was that these affiliated programs must bear the financial burden which is currently being borne by the Hamden taxpayers. And the Children's Day Committee is meeting on April 26 at 6:00 PM at the ski-in center, and they would welcome your input.
Thank you. Infrastructure Committee, Counsel Marvel?
We have not met since the last council meeting. The next infrastructure meeting will be this coming Monday.
Thank you. Planning and Involvement Committee, Counsel McPike?
Uh, we met on April 6. A number of items came up. Probably the most time-consuming item was the Marina sign progress. And I'm not really sure where we are on that right now, but I'm not sure if everyone is there at that. But to update the, maybe the town manager should update the public as to, as to where we stand on that to make it correct.
Sure, so as, hopefully people know watching from home, we have a terrific marina that was improved substantially several years ago, just a few years ago, actually. It's a fairly new amenity in town. And there are two businesses, McLaughlin's and Hamlin's Marine are located down there. And we've been working now since, at least last summer, to try to work on improved signage on Main Road North so that people can see this terrific public amenity. And we've had nothing but problems with Main DOT. There's state law that prohibits off-site signage to be located within their right-of-way. And we've had multiple correspondences even since the last meeting last week where we are trying to make the case that the primary purpose of the sign is a public town sign to bring attention to the marina with a secondary purpose and secondary sizing to bring attention to the two businesses. At this point, the opinion they've given us is that that would not fly. So we, we will talk tomorrow night about what other options. In addition, I've advised McLaughlin's to continue conversations with an abutting landowner because if there's private land on which a sign could be located, that could solve the problem. So we're, we're still working on that issue.
Thank you.
Other items that were brought up were the Home Occupation Revision Draft, and that was discussed. Flaglots Amendment Draft was okayed and sent to planning. Solarize Bangor, which we just did. Harbor Ordinance Discussion, which, as you saw tonight, is, is coming back to Planning and Development again. And the last item was, was a zoning consideration for 23 Carter Street, and I believe that is in planning stage, gone back to the, to the planner for, to see if we can do some kind of paperwork on that. That's it.
Thank you. Finance, Counsel Royce?
During tonight's meeting, we discussed the sewer fund status update as well as financing options. Discussion was some discrepancies in our, our funding, or our, our bills that we have received, and further research is needed for that to kind of air that out, figure out why we're seeing the discrepancies that we are. Also, discussion around how to finance needs in our current sewage system and looking at a number of different possibilities to include a possible special election if needed for referendum. Also, was discussed tonight, mobile food vendor on public property. As most people know, we have the farmer's market, and we've been approached by another vendor, which is Wild cow Cramery, to place their vehicle one day a week up by the pool. Further discussion on that will be held as well. Historic District Ordinance was discussed tonight, and until we have a committee created, it'll move under Services until, again, we, we create that, that group. And that is it.
Thank you. The next item up tonight is the manager's report. Town Manager Jennings?
I do have a brief report that I was just passing around. As you know, with the support of the council, we have moved, we are moving in the direction of online registration for recreation and pool programs. We signed the contract a couple of weeks ago. We've made a great deal of progress, and we expect that online registration will be fully live as early as tomorrow. So once that's ready, we'll send it out to you, we'll post it to the website and social media, but we're excited about that. Next item we already discussed, but the RSU 22 Budget Hearing will continue a week from tonight, Tuesday, the 26th at 6:00 PM at Hamden Academy Library. The third item, with the council's support, we issued a tax anticipation note early in the fiscal year to help us get through what the former manager correctly predicted would be cash flow challenges before the April tax due date. We did start feeling the squeeze in February, and we drew down a total of $650,000 of the $2 million that was authorized. And that money was necessary for us to stay current with our bills on the general fund side. Since the tax due date on April 6, we paid that amount back in full, so our tan is fully repaid, and the total interest cost for that short-term loan was about $850. Fourth item, the Children's Day Planning is well underway, and they are holding a Bowl-a-thon on Saturday, May 14 to raise money for the 2016 Hamden Children's Day. More information is available on Facebook at facebook.com/HamdenChildrensDayMaine. And Children's Day itself will be on Saturday, August 20. And finally, the annual stream cleanup will be held on Saturday, May 7. That effort is being led by our GIS IT Specialist Kyle Severance. We are running short on barbecue grills, so I don't know if any members of the council have a grill that you could loan us for the day or members of the public, but that's one need we're trying to fill. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item up tonight is Counselor's Comments. Counsel McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Between now and June 20, the town council will be developing next year's budget, and the results will likely have a significant impact upon your tax burden. I'm asking you for your help. I need your input. Please call me at 862-4895, or better yet, join me at Angler's Restaurant on Saturday, April 30, where I host the Hamden Taxpayer Clinic from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You do have a voice in the process. Please use it. Your opinion is important to me. Please shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. Counsel Comer?
No comment, thank you.
Counsel Marvel?
Um, yeah, just a couple things on recognition. The 30th Maine Volunteer Role of Honor came out recently to recognize people with more than 500 annual documented hours of service, and there were four people from Hamden that qualified, Leland and Lisa Alley, Yvonne Crockett, and Darlene Helms. And also, congratulations to Nick Gilpin for being named the Bangor Daily News All-Maine First Team this year.
Thank you. Counsel Wild?
No comment.
Counsel McPike?
No comment.
Counsel Royce?
No comment.
And on that note, over the last weekend, my wife and I had a chance to travel into Richmond, Virginia, so while we were there, we took a little side trip to Lawrenceville, Virginia to look at the Fiberite plant that they have there. We were contacted by the manager of the plant. He met us with a chemical engineer and gave us a tour of the Fiberite facility. We were pleasantly surprised on how clean and nice the facility is. He took us through the whole process. It was 70-plus degrees out that day, and I can say we walked through the whole plant, and I didn't have one fly on me, so that says quite a lot about the way they keep that facility dealing with trash. There was no smell. Everybody says there's a lot of smell. We could not determine any smell inside of the plant, and let alone outside, but we were all through the inside, and there was no strong odor that I could detect at all. And if, if there was, I'm sure my wife would have told me about it, and she didn't detect any either. But I was really, really happy with the way they treated us and the look of that facility. It gave me a good feeling that I think the Fiberite facility is going to be the wave of the future. And on that, that's my final comment. And now, I would say if we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss counsel pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056E.
I move that we enter executive session under a client, Attorney/Client Consultations under 1 MRSA, Section 4056E.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. This meeting is now closed until executive session is over.